Gracias a todos por venir. Esta es la primera elección contesa del cuarto distrito en 12 años. Hay dos candidatos del Distrito Vía Ciudadano de la ciudad. Están aquí en el escenario Alex Jarrett y David Murphy. A las ocho se van a hacer los candidatos del comité escolar. Solo hay uno del Distrito Vía Ciudadano, pero también los candidatos de la sala. Gracias por acompañarnos, los candidatos del Distrito Vía Ciudadano. Son una hora, tendremos unos minutos para declaraciones de abertura de dos candidatos. Tendré 20 minutos de preguntas para ellos y luego preguntas del público. Y si tienen preguntas para uno el otro, pueden hacer eso en una declaración final. Hey Alex, ¿quieres empezar?
Bien, gracias a todos por venir. Esto es muy emocionante. Estoy emocionado de tener este intercambio de ideas y de averiguar cómo podemos servir mejor a la comunidad. Así que voy a dirigirme porque creo que necesitamos liderazgo innovador y pensamiento fuera de la caja para lidiar con los desafíos que estamos enfrentando, especialmente los posibles de cambio climático y la inigualabilidad de la riqueza. Tengo 44 años. He vivido aquí en Norehtampton durante 21 años y 14 años en el Distrito Vía Ciudadano de Florence Center. Durante 17 años he sido cofundador y dueño de la Cooperativa Pedal People. A través de esa experiencia de dueño, he aprendido contabilidad, presupuestos, auditorias, impuestos y todo lo que tiene que ver con las finanzas de dirigir un pequeño negocio. También tengo experiencia extensa en facilitación y encontrar un lugar común. Somos un negocio democrático, así que cada año soy reelecto como dueño por mis compañeros trabajadores. He estado muy amando reunir a toda la gente del Distrito Vía Ciudadano. He apretado 83% de las puertas, así que eso son alrededor de 1400 puertas. Y la cosa más importante que le pregunto es: ¿qué problemas son importantes para ti? Mi campaña se centra en ser responsables, involucrada en la comunidad y inclusiva. Eso significa contactar a personas que no han sentido ser escuchadas por la ciudad y también que son menos representados. Y estoy comprometido con continuar ese trabajo a través de apretar puertas y foros de atención de la comunidad en lugares otros que sean el Congreso de la Ciudad si soy electo. Hablo sobre el cambio climático, la rentabilidad. Soy miembro de la asociación de viviendas de Norehtampton, así que ya estoy trabajando en eso. Desarrollo y transporte y las conexiones allí. Escuelas, desarrollo empresarial y derechos de los trabajadores. Tengo muchas ideas, pero no tengo todas las respuestas. Y el trabajo real, creo, en representarte es escuchar, colaborar y encontrar un lugar común para avanzar. Gracias.
Vamos a intercambiar, vamos a intercambiar, vamos a tener dificultades técnicas. Bueno, la primera cosa que quiero hacer es leer la declaración de misa del flyer que creo que fue enviado a todos ustedes. Y es mi opinión, ser un candidato del Distrito Vía Ciudadano no es una caja de�a para tus opiniones políticas personales. Ser un candidato del Distrito Vía Ciudadano es competidamente supervisar la operación de una municipalidad de 116 millones de dólares que proporciona servicios vitales a los residentes y contribuyentes de la ciudad. Servicios como la policía, el fuego, el cuidado médico de emergencia, agua, túneles, calles, puentes, educación y parque. Desde el departamento de construcción hasta el Consejo de Salud, la ciudad de Norehtampton toca casi toda la vida de todos los demás. Te mereces ser un candidato del Distrito Vía Ciudadano con 14 años de experiencia que pueda traer el conocimiento y la experiencia necesarias para hacer el trabajo bien. Por eso estoy pidiendo su apoyo de nuevo para ser un candidato del Distrito Vía Ciudadano. En todos nuestros esfuerzos personales, lo que traemos a la mesa es nuestro conocimiento y nuestra experiencia. Tengo 40 años de experiencia municipal. Comencé cuando David Muzany me nombró al comité que compró la televisión cable a Norehtampton. Trabajé en la asociación de viviendas bajo la administración de Mary Ford. De hecho, Claire Higgins y yo trabajamos en el comité juntos. Trabajé en la Comisión Histórica de la calle Elm, la Comisión Architectural de Negocios Centrales. Creo que lo mejor que hicimos fue la nueva estación de policía y el diseño para eso. En el Consejo de Avisas, estuve dos años en el Consejo de Avisas. Y ahí es donde aprendí sobre las finanzas municipales. Y permanezco un avisador acreditado de Massachusetts, lo cual es algo maravilloso, información importante. Así que los jefes Muzany, Ford, Higgins y Narcoitz me han todos nombrado a diferentes comités. Mi decisión de volver a dirigirme, mucho de ello se basó en el hecho de que tenemos cuatro asientos abiertos que vendrán. Cuatro asientos abiertos, vamos a tener un nuevo presidente del consejo, la vicepresidenta de Finanzas, Maureen Carney, quien en realidad estaba en esta habitación conmigo y David Narcoitz hace 14 años cuando originalmente nos candiduimos para el Distrito Vía Ciudadano. Van a irse. Yo presido Finanzas. He estado en Finanzas desde que me puse en el consejo. Los presidentes Bardley y Dostal y Narcoitz y Dwight y Ryan O'Donnell todos me pusieron en Finanzas debido a lo que sé sobre las finanzas municipales. Con cuatro nuevos candidatos, si voy, son cinco. Vas a perder el candidato que sabe más sobre las finanzas municipales. En un año, vamos a tener un voto de superación en marzo, lo que significa que vamos a estar bajo la pistola para poner un presupuesto. Va a ser aún más difícil si no conseguimos la superación. Pero para mí, no quería dejar a las personas que permanecen alertas sin volver a dirigirme con todos los enojos financieros que pueden venir a nuestro camino para el presupuesto de 2021. En realidad estamos en 2020 ahora mismo. Así que 14 años en el comité de Finanzas. Diez años en asuntos legislativos. Sabes, lo que hacemos como candidatos, y esto se confunde con muchos foros. Hicimos órdenes, hacemos ordenanzas, hacemos resoluciones y aprobamos las nombraciones de jefes. La mayoría de las órdenes son financieras, lo que significa que pasan por el comité de Finanzas. La mayoría de las ordenanzas son o zonaje o parque. Con 40 años en el negocio de la propiedad real, sé muy bien el zonaje. Así que créeme, podría preguntar muchas preguntas a mis compañeros candidatos sobre el zonaje.
David, voy a tener que quitarle su declaración final aquí, o algo después, ¿vale?
Bueno, puedo hablar para siempre, así que sí.
Está bien, en realidad, cuando mencionaste los 116 millones, vamos a enfocarnos en eso. Vamos a deshacer quién va primero aquí. El presupuesto fiscal actual para la ciudad es de 116.8 millones de dólares, lo cual es un aumento del 30% sobre el presupuesto de hace 10 años. En el mismo periodo, la inflación aumentó un 18%. ¿Es este nivel de aumento sostenible y deseable? ¿Debería la ciudad seguir buscando cualquier tipo de fondos que pueda obtener, incluyendo el límite de 2.5% total, el 3% total del CPA, cualquier nueva tarifa local, incluyendo maximizar los fondos de marihuana, y también, ¿apoyas la superación como sugieres en marzo?
¿Quién quieres ir primero? Así que la pregunta es: ¿crees que el aumento es sostenible, el 30%?
Y, ¿deberíamos siempre comenzar con el defecto de ir por el 2.5% total? ¿Debería el CPA, este es el... ¿Cómo se llama el CPA?
Acto de Preservación de la Comunidad.
Acto de Preservación de la Comunidad, sea el 3%, ¿apoyarías una tasa menor? ¿Debería la ciudad siempre buscar fondos adicionales? El jefe de la ciudad Narcoitz buscaba conseguir fondos adicionales de marihuana durante el último año buscando maximizar eso y ir junto con una superación. ¿Deberían siempre haber esos fondos en el presupuesto operativo y si la tasa de inflación es apropiada y sostenible?
Así que creo que cuando miro las cosas en las que la ciudad está gastando dinero y miro los problemas que estamos enfrentando, no veo cosas que sean locas y fuera de límites para lo que estamos gastando. Y parece que es una solicitud razonable en cuanto a lo que el presupuesto es. Y con la pregunta de la superación, creo que hay mucha gente en la ciudad que está luchando y que también hay mucha gente que puede pagar por ello. Y uno de los problemas con eso tiene que ver con que estamos muy limitados por el estado en cómo podemos taxarnos nosotros mismos. Sabes, y el tema de que se basa en el impuesto sobre la propiedad y que no se basa en el ingreso en absoluto. Así que tienes gente que tiene un hogar en el que viven pero tienen dificultades para pagar las tarifas. Y luego tienes gente que tiene un ingreso muy alto. Así que creo que soy un apoyo reluctante a la superación porque creo que los servicios de la ciudad que estamos proporcionando son importantes. Y creo que el CPA también es algo que es muy importante. Pero me gustaría ver si vamos a ir por una superación. Me gustaría vernos trabajando duro para averiguar, para pedir al estado cambios en la forma en que podamos dar ahorros a personas de ingresos bajos, a los seniores, a las personas con ingresos fijos. Ya estamos haciendo lo máximo que podemos allí, permitido por la ley del estado. Y estoy preocupado que, sabes, nos encantaría vernos capaces de taxar a personas con ingresos más altos y que tengan, digamos, hogares muy caros más y poder no tener que taxar a personas que no ganan tanto dinero. Así que no creo que haya respondido todo en there, pero eso es un principio.
Está bien, así que cuando se mostró la proposición 2.5 en 1980, creo, nunca se supuso que las ciudades y las ciudades de Massachusetts podrían sobrevivir con un aumento estatal del 2.5% del 2% anual. Si piensas en los costos de personal, costos de personas, costos de energía, costos médicos, nunca se iba a alcanzar la ciudad con un aumento del 2.5%. El plan era que las personas que dirigen el gobierno de la ciudad tendrían que volver y hacer un caso para ustedes si teníamos necesidad de más dinero. No podíamos aumentarlo automáticamente, tendríamos que volver y decir: "Aquí es lo que queremos hacer, aquí es lo que queremos gastar el dinero. ¿Están de acuerdo en una elección para que nos permitan hacer eso o no?" Tenemos que hacer un caso por ello. Hay tres tipos de superaciones. Hay una superación de exclusión de deudas, que es generalmente si quieres construir algo. Se permite que el servicio de deuda cada año exceda el límite de levante establecido bajo la proposición 2.5. Verás ciudades y ciudades hacer una superación. Hattie lo hace todo el tiempo, quiere comprar un backhoe para el departamento de carreteras. Eso se va en un año. Va subiendo, va bajando, y compras la cosa. Lo que el jefe de la ciudad Narcoitz busca es una superación general. Este tipo de superación se queda con nosotros para siempre porque es para la gente. Si has estado viendo las noticias últimamente, el año pasado hicimos contratos con todas nuestras uniones en la ciudad de Norehtampton. Contratos multiaños. Nuestro problema va a venir en el segundo y tercer año cuando esos pasos nos alcanzan. No tenemos el dinero ahora mismo para cubrir todo eso, lo cual es por eso que esta superación está llegando. Sabes, es 2020, 2021 será estrecho, pero después de eso es donde viene el problema. Así que una superación general es un aumento permanente del base de levante y crece del 2.5% cada año después de eso. Así que esta es la que es más difícil de conseguir porque esta nunca se paga. Porque es para la gente y el concepto es que si votas por la superación quieres mantener a los maestros, a los bomberos, a los oficiales de la policía, a todos los que trabajan para la ciudad. Hay más de 1000 empleados, tal vez 1000, 20, 25 empleados en la ciudad de Norehtampton. Y si quieres mantenerlos, es por eso que necesitamos la superación. Ahora, creo que el jefe va a pedir algo por alrededor de 2.5 millones. Se movió esto porque el estado está peleando con la fórmula de distribución de la educación. No sabemos qué es. Y no quiere pedir lo que cree que es el valor correcto y que el estado, después de que decida lo que va a pedir, se vuelve a pelear con la fórmula y cambia eso. Así que es por eso que está siendo retrasado. Pero necesitamos aprobar un presupuesto para el 30 de junio. No vamos a saber hasta el inicio de marzo durante esa primaria si tenemos el dinero o no. Así que realmente vamos a tener que esforzarnos para hacer el presupuesto, con o sin él. En cuanto a mi apoyo a la superación, realmente creo firmemente esto. Esto es cuando nos dices si quieres que gastemos el dinero o no. Puedo decirte que vamos a perder gente porque son la mayor parte del presupuesto. Así que si la superación no pasa, puede haber escalas de clases mayores, puede haber menos servicios de emergencia, gente respondiendo. Pero no es para mí decirte, es para ti decirnos. Eso es lo que hace la proposición 2.5. Dice: "Tenemos que hacer un caso para ustedes y ustedes tienen que decirnos lo que quieren que su ciudad se dirija." No puedo decirte que será diferente sin el dinero. No puedo decirte que David Narcoitz ha hecho un trabajo muy bueno gastando dinero de manera sabia. No hay desperdicio there. Pero la única cosa que no podemos decir es cuán estrecho es para ti. Si no puedes pagar por ello, si tienes un ingreso fijo, no voy a negarte a decir no porque simplemente no puedes hacerlo. Necesitas decirnos si vamos a dar el dinero o si no puedes darle el dinero. Así que ese es el propósito de esto. Pero puedo decirte que el dinero se gasta de manera sabia. Lo que realmente va a ser dañoso, mañana por la noche voy a dirigir el Comité de Ajustes de Capital, el otro comité de dinero. Vamos a empezar a hablar con los departamentos sobre las cosas que quieren que hagamos. Ajustes de capital son la pavina de la calle Spring y Chesterfield, la pavina de la calle Burt's Field, finalmente. Nuevas botellas, nuevas cuerdas. Puedo hablar para siempre. Pero esos son los tipos de cosas que van a ser dañadas primero porque sin el dinero extra, los ajustes de capital, esos tipos de cosas van.
Está bien, voy a empezar con David ahora, sigamos con eso un poco. ¿Cómo sabes que los servicios de la ciudad son dirigidos tan bien y el dinero es gastado tan eficientemente? Esta es una tarea del consejo de la ciudad en las audiencias de presupuestos. Pero, ¿vas a argumentar y ¿harías el esfuerzo para asegurarse de que los departamentos están cumpliendo sus metas y están operando eficientemente?
Bueno, sé que yo hago eso, pero luego estoy en Finanzas. Estoy en Finanzas, así que durante 14 años he estado cuidando esto. Así que yo hago eso. No puedo hablar para los otros candidatos si ellos prestan más atención al presupuesto que yo. Pero sé que el consejo hace, el jefe nos da el presupuesto en mayo. Entre mayo y cuando tenemos nuestras lecturas del presupuesto, tenemos reuniones presupuestarias con los departamentos. Hablamos con los departamentos, les preguntamos preguntas, les preguntamos qué están haciendo con esta parte del presupuesto o esa parte del presupuesto. Tenemos reuniones trimestres en el consejo con el director de Finanzas que nos da la hoja de presupuestos municipal y dice: "Este cuenta terminado, este cuenta caído". La mayoría de nuestros gastos, en realidad, y la mayoría de nuestro dinero libre proviene de posiciones vacías. Porque, de nuevo, los salarios son la mayor parte del presupuesto. Así que si tienes una posición vacía, eso se acumula relativamente rápido. Y en algunos de los servicios de emergencia es realmente difícil llenar una posición, así que tarda. Así que si tienes una posición vacía, puede tomar a veces un año llenarla, al menos en la policía, así que tarda un tiempo. Pero sí, al menos sé que yo la miro y sé que el director de Finanzas viene cuatro veces al año con la hoja de presupuestos y dice: "Aquí es donde estamos arriba, aquí es donde estamos abajo". Y luego nos preguntan rutinariamente, porque siempre que se mueve el dinero dentro del presupuesto, nos preguntan si se aprueba una orden financiera para incluso cambiar el dinero dentro de un departamento de su mantenimiento ordinario de su personal o si tienen una posición vacía y tienen dinero de personal y tienen una reparación de emergencia, se les pide que lo cambien de la otra manera. Así que cuatro veces al año vemos al director de Finanzas y, está bien, estoy listo.
Gracias. Sí, así que he asistido a las audiencias de presupuestos del jefe y revisado los últimos años de los presupuestos para ver cómo está cambiando, dónde estamos viendo los aumentos. Y también, en hablar con la gente que va a la puerta, escucho la reclamación de que la ciudad está desperdiciando dinero. Que, sabes, East Hampton lo hace de esta manera, rentan en lugar de comprar. Y así que no tengo el conocimiento para saber si eso es verdad o no. Pero lo que me gustaría saber y lo que me gustaría hacer es hablar con la gente que trabaja y son familiarizados con otras municipalidades y comparar y decir: "¿Es esta una manera más eficiente de hacer algo?" Creo que tenemos mucho que aprender y mucho que aprender desde una perspectiva externa. Sabes, recibimos auditorias, lo cual es bueno y que recibimos para asegurarnos de que nuestros libros están en orden. Pero eso no es, eso, sabes, quiero saber, está bien, ¿qué piensan las personas con experiencia que están fuera de la ciudad de cómo estamos haciendo las cosas? Supongo que van a decir que estás haciendo un buen trabajo, pero, sabes, si soy electo, eso es algo importante que quiero hacer para asegurarnos de que tengamos más responsabilidad.
Permítame hacer otra pregunta presupuestaria relacionada, con un poco de elemento social también. El comité de la ciudad y el jefe de la ciudad Narcoitz han presentado a Norehtampton como una ciudad sagrada y han declarado que la ciudad no ayudará a imponer leyes de inmigración o que cumplirán con peticiones de detención por parte de ICE, la Agencia de Inmigración y Enfermedumbre. El gobierno de Trump buscaba penalizar ciudades sagradas específicamente al renunciar a los granteles federales a las municipalidades que no cumplen con las peticiones de detención por parte de ICE. Si esta amenaza se volvió real, ¿qué posición tomarías como candidato del Distrito Vía Ciudadano? Alex.
Así que es muy importante para mí que todos sean tratados con respeto y tratados, en general, independientemente de su estatus de inmigración. Y así apoyo la resolución de la ciudad sagrada. Y si se acercara a que estábamos perdiendo dinero activamente y no fuimos capaces de conseguirlo en otro lugar, definitivamente tendríamos que tomar un largo y duro mirar a la situación. Creo que mis ideales son, vamos a continuar asegurándonos de que apoyemos los esfuerzos de la ciudad sagrada. Y ahí es donde querría ir. Y quiero tener muchas conversaciones con nosotros mismos como ciudad e involucrar a la gente para decidir, sabes, si va a haber alguna penalti financiera severa. Pero en general, sabes, me gustaría seguir con eso.
Bueno, ganamos casi ningún dinero del gobierno federal, así que es una amenaza muy vacía para nosotros. Probablemente ganamos más dinero en nuestros módulos de parque que obtenemos del gobierno federal. Así que al menos en ese caso, es una amenaza muy vaca. No podemos perder tanto. Pero la otra cosa sobre el concepto de la ciudad sagrada, sabes, la Constitución de Massachusetts dice que no se puede jalar a la gente fuera del parque sin una orden. Sabes, ha sido hecho en una cosa política. Pero un oficial de la policía no puede venir a ti porque recibió una llamada telefónica de Washington y te sacan del parque a menos que haya una orden para ti. Estos tipos no están enviando ordenes, solo dicen: "Vete a sacar a esta persona, queremos que la lleven". Eso es ilegal en Massachusetts, lo cual es por lo que no hacemos eso. No puedes hacer eso en absoluto. Si alguien犯了罪行 y una orden entra, sí, la policía puede tomarlo. Pero la policía no puede sacar a nadie del parque a menos que ICE los llame y les diga: "Vete a sacar a este tipo". Dicen: "¿Hay una orden?" Dicen: "No", dicen: "Olvídate, no vamos a ir, es secuestro". No van a hacer eso. El único lugar donde es un problema es si esa persona hace una violación que es un delito arrestable. La policía puede arrestarlo. Y cuando se arregla en el tribunal, a veces es cuando ICE los saca. Si el juez los libera, los sacan porque saben que van a estar allí. Pero ellos lo hacen y ellos no lo hacen. Así que la única vez que la policía de Norehtampton está tomando a alguien de estatus de inmigración cuestionable en custodia es si hacen un crimen que es arrestable en frente del oficial o si hay una orden para ellos. En general, es secuestro, lo cual es por lo que no lo hacemos. Porque en Massachusetts no puedes simplemente sacar a alguien del parque porque algún otro jurado te llama y dice: "Llévalo". Dicen: "Llévalo", dices: "Genial, envíame la orden, lo conseguiré". Sin orden, van. Así que en dos niveles, no es legal en primer lugar si no hay orden. En el segundo nivel, no recibimos tanto dinero del gobierno federal para empezar en nuestro presupuesto. Así que realmente no hay riesgo.
Si fueran un millón de dólares, ¿tú todavía...?
Es mucho menos que eso. No, porque es ilegal. Sabes, nuestra policía no hace cosas ilegales. No van a sacar a alguien del parque a través de una llamada de ICE o un texto de ICE o un correo electrónico de ICE. Van a decir: "No tienes orden, no tienes a nadie" porque no podemos sacarlos. La verdadera vulnerabilidad es si ese individuo hace algo ilegal, por lo que pueden ser arrestados. ICE puede lidiar cuando salen del tribunal y los saca, pero si hacen eso ellos mismos, no participamos en eso.
Está bien, el consejo de la ciudad ha hecho numerosas resoluciones a lo largo de los años. Muchas de ellas son sobre temas mundiales, nacionales y sociales que están fuera de la visión de la ciudad. Estoy preguntando, ¿crees que son significativos, representan a la mayoría de los residentes de la ciudad y un uso valioso del tiempo del consejo?
¿Quién quieres ir primero?
Tú puedes empezar.
¿Quieres ir primero? Sí, quiero decir, tengo una lista de nuestras resoluciones. Hacemos, bueno, estas son en gran medida las relacionadas con la energía. Pero siento que son importantes para los ciudadanos de Norehtampton. Son muy importantes para mis colegas. Y la mayoría del tiempo los apoyo. Creo que en muy raras ocasiones me desacuerdo con la mayoría del consejo. Porque, y recuerdo, hace 14 años cuando estaba en esta habitación, alguien me preguntó: "¿Vas a representarnos a tus intereses personales?" Y dije: "No, voy a representar lo que creo que los constituidores quieren". Y la mayoría de las resoluciones que entran, mis compañeros candidatos las quieren y estoy cómodo con que mis constituidores las quieran. Así que muy raramente tengo un problema con ninguna de ellas. Y voté a apoyarlas.
Bueno, el trabajo del consejo de la ciudad es tratar cosas muy concretas. Y eso es la mayoría del día a día, sabes, la mayoría del trabajo es hacer ese trabajo. Pero eso no es mutuamente exclusivo con pasar resoluciones que están a favor de cosas que están más allá de nuestras fronteras o que incluso están dentro de nuestras fronteras en términos de decir: "Bienvenimos a este grupo particular de personas a la ciudad", y, sabes, lo que llega a ser, en realidad, una de las razones por las que las resoluciones son importantes. Por ejemplo, la resolución que dimos sobre refugiados y diciendo que estamos bienveniendo a refugiados en realidad llevó a refugiados que ven aquí, sabes, las charities católicas y otros diciendo: "Vamos a Norehtampton y luego, o, "Norehtampton quiere refugiados". Así que eso fue realmente positivo. Y ahora tenemos un número completo de refugiados que viven aquí, muchos ciudadanos los apoyan. Y creo que también ayuda pasar legislación estatal y federal para nosotros decir: "Nos apoyamos en esta cosa en particular" realmente ayuda a nuestros funcionarios electos estatales y federales para poder convencer a otros a buscar ese apoyo y votar. Y luego, siendo el organismo electo de la ciudad, y si hay algo en lo que respecta a nuestros valores y nuestra, o, sabes, establecer que este es un lugar seguro para la gente, creo que es importante que pasemos resoluciones que reflejan, como dijo David, lo que nuestros constituidores quieren. Creo que es una parte muy importante. Que, sabes, tengo muchas creencias y las estoy poniendo allí abiertas. Y espero que, y sabes, puedas decidir si estás de acuerdo con muchos de esos o si estás de acuerdo con mi filosofía. Pero también estoy comprometido con, sabes, mantener realmente conexión con mis constituidores y así obtener una comprensión de la gente sobre qué valores apoyan.
Una de las resoluciones, no nacional o global, sino una que en realidad tenía una relación con Norehtampton, fue la resolución de 2013, "Las calles vibrantes". La resolución fue aprobada por el consejo de la ciudad. Esto llamó a la ciudad a asegurar acceso universal, y yo voy aquí, a calles democráticas donde congregamos y conocemos a gente, a gente que conocemos, a gente que no conocemos y a gente que puede no querer conocer. ¿Deberían los preocupados por el manejo de las calles en las calles de la ciudad de downtown provocar una reconsideración de esta visión? David, ¿quieres tomar eso?
Bueno, de nuevo, la gente tiene un derecho constitucional, tanto como quieras que lo sea, para pedir dinero al parque. Quiero decir, es una cosa legal de hacer. No puedes detener a la gente de hacer eso. Sabes, resolución o no resolución, tienen un derecho constitucional de estar allí y de hacer eso. No deberían estar arrasando a la gente, eso no es legal. Pero no, si son respetuosos y piden fondos, realmente no puedes encargarse de ellos y los mover. La única cosa que fue importante para mí con la resolución y cómo cambió de su primera versión a la versión que finalmente se aprobó, fue la agresividad de ella. Sabes, para algunas personas, la agresión es una forma de comunicación, pero también amenaza a la gente. Y la versión original de esa resolución dio una especie de reconocimiento a la agresividad en lugar de la descomunicación. Se calmó un poco a medida que aprobó. Pero no, sabes, tenemos vida calleja vibrante. Algunas personas lo aprecian, algunas personas no. Pero mientras la gente esté operando dentro de lo que es su derecho en un lugar público, realmente no puedes tener política pública contra eso.
Así que no, creo que es una buena resolución. Sé, así que recientemente, hace un par de años, el Comité de Recursos de la Ciudad hizo un estudio sobre la ciudad de downtown. Y la recomendación última fue encontrar, "maneras no ordenantes y no punitive de abordar las necesidades de las poblaciones en peligro de la ciudad de downtown". Así que creo que tener una amplia variedad de personas en las calles es en realidad una cosa muy bella. Amo tener una vida calleja vibrante. Y pero, y quiero ver que las necesidades de la gente sean cumplidas y que nosotros tengamos una comprensión que esté informada sobre el trauma, sobre lo que la gente ha pasado, asegurarnos de que la policía tenga esa comprensión y otras, sabes, en términos, y la gente en el consejo de la ciudad tenga esa comprensión. Y así creo que eso ayudará en, ayudar, sabes, quiero decir, así que al mismo tiempo, muy apoyo mucho los derechos constitucionales de la gente de estar allí y quiero encontrar formas de apoyar a la gente. Y así hay otra cosa que estoy a favor de es lo que se llama la iniciativa "Iniciativa Primero en la vivienda". Y ahí es donde, si miras los costos que se dan para, por ejemplo, tener el salón de emergencia ser el oficio de un médico o la gente que vaya a la cárcel por el invierno porque están en plan de propósito porque quieren un lugar para quedarse. because they would like a place to stay, or, you know, because they need to be housed and sheltered. And the costs of those, it's actually, if you take all those costs into account, it's better to find housing for people. Because when people have housing, then they figure out how to have a more stable life. And so, the city doesn't pay all those costs. So we just couldn't do that on our own. But in connection with state and other agencies, I think it's worth looking into that kind of initiative.
I've got some other questions, but I'm willing to open it up to the audience here. So if you have any questions, we can walk around.
This is for both of you. I'd like to know if each of you agrees with the statement that we're in the midst of a climate crisis at this time.
I do, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, I do agree with that statement. I do think we are in a climate emergency. I think it is basically, it's sort of an existential crisis in that it will really affect our world for years to come. But it's also deeply interconnected with other issues in terms of that it will affect many certain people more than others. So climate justice is a way to talk about that. So I think that we need to, Northampton need to be, we are doing quite a bit in that regard to be a leader. So, but I think we need to do more. So we've done some, so buildings are the biggest use of energy in our city. And some initiatives that I would be interested in seeing are having a net-zero energy by law for new construction. There's actually a plan to phase that in, in the new resiliency plan that's coming out. Replacing our fleet of municipal vehicles with electric cars. Having someone in every department that is assigned to oversee the carbon use of that department. So kind of like we have a dollar budget in our departments. And to have a carbon budget is also one way to look at it and have that be decreasing. So, you know, pursuing state and federal grants to help with the finances of that. The Community Course Choice Aggregation Electricity Plan that's currently moving along is another good choice because then it allows us to choose renewable sources of energy for everyone in the city, unless they opt out. But get costs that, to save costs. And I think, well, you know, I don't want to go on and on, but this is definitely an issue where I could go on and on. So when I think about ordinances that the city council might pass, I think about, kind of like, what's the biggest fish that we could catch here? You know, we banned plastic bags. We're thinking about plastic straws. Those are great things. They can help people move along. And plastic waste is definitely an issue. But, you know, for example, we should look into food waste and organics. And how much food is wasted, first of all, before it even comes to us? So we can look at, there are some places where they require that any saleable food be donated rather than trashed. But also, moving forward on issues of composting and anaerobic digesters. I saw an article in the Gazette about pigs in Maine that are now eating all the school waste food. So there's so many different angles where, and the big contribution to climate change with that is that when food goes into the landfills, or organic waste, that it produces methane. Some of that methane can be captured. But otherwise, you know, a lot of landfills, the methane, which is a very potent greenhouse gas, is going into the atmosphere. I guess I should stop. Okay.
Well, in 2010, when I was on the council, we became a green community. We're designated a green community in Massachusetts, which means we adopted the stretch building code as one of the steps there, higher energy efficiency for individual homes. We also agreed to buy energy-efficient vehicles. So for instance, everybody used to drive old police cars, you know, until the wheels fell off. Now you'll find the building department is driving Subarus. The media people are driving electric cars. That's part of staying a green community, and we have to re-up for that. In 2014, I was a member of Northampton Clean Energy Working Group. Along with Consular Barge, who was on that committee, we were the two councillors on that. And we came up with a Clean Energy Roadmap for Northampton. It was a 48-page report. It's still on the website, city website. You can look at it. And this roadmap had the steps that we've been taking ever since. LED streetlights. The fact that Mayor just announced the other day, he's going to go through the municipal buildings and make sure the heating systems are as efficient as they can be. In 2013, we did a resolution to support fossil fuel divestment. That was 2013, '14. We opposed the Tennessee pipeline expansion. In '17, we asked the Massachusetts Legislature to adopt a carbon pricing policy to curb climate change. In '17, we became a blue water community. We also did a resolution favoring 100% renewable energy. In '19, we opposed expansion of gas infrastructure. And also in '19, we voted to support the Green New Deal. And the Green New Deal, if you didn't know this, is in fact a resolution of the Congress. It's not a law, but it's a resolution. So I do support the city's steps and individual steps to be responsible about the waste we produce. Because this planet is, it's like a giant terrarium. It's sealed. And we're, and I'm pleased that we are aware of that. What terrifies me is places like India and China that have over 300 coal plants for electricity that they're planning to build on the books now. What scares me is 600 million people in Africa that don't have power or fresh water. Those aren't controlled things that we can keep an eye on. So I'm very pleased that we're doing what we can do here, and I think we're being reasonably responsible. But so much of the world isn't. And that guk winds up in our atmosphere. So I really hope, and I'm very disappointed, that internationally, we've lost our momentum to try and curb those other countries. And I'm sure the Russians aren't being real good about it either. But things that go up in the air on other continents still come down here. So that's where I'm most concerned. Because a lot of these places have no regard. They don't want to hear about it. They're just going to town, burning coal and doing nasty things. And that really does scare me.
Grab a little council roll there. Any more questions?
This is a very general question, so I apologize for that. Where do you see Florence Center? What do you see Florence Center in 10 years? We'll come back in 10 years from now. What would you like Florence Center to be?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah, no, I think it's a great question. So I love Florence Center right now. I live in Florence Center, and I get to walk or ride my bike to so many things that I use, the hardware store, healthcare, Coopers, if I need pie or pizza as well there. So I am really appreciating how it is. I would love to see, and so we have done a series of community forums about the future of Florence Center. We've hired Dodson and Flinker to prepare and do, you know, in consultation with the residents. And I'm pleased with that report and with the status of that. I like the idea of more walkable, mixed-use development. I think there's some great opportunities in terms of having, you know, what I mean by that is usually where you have retail stores on the first floor and then residences above. There's not very many residences right now in Florence Center. Because I knocked on them all, so I saw that there were a lot to skip. And there are some good opportunities, I think. Because parking is something that people are concerned about. And there are some good opportunities for shared parking initiatives with that kind of development. For example, we have a, so the healthcare center, Valley Medical, they have a, the general use of their parking lot is from 9 to 5, the standard hours. Then residential use is almost entirely opposite of that. And there are metrics that you can use to say, "Well, we can kind of overlap these parking lots." So anything we can do to incentivize developers and property owners to talk to each other and make those agreements around parking would be great. Because we don't want to see another retail store torn down for parking, which is an example, you know, right next to your office, that former FJ Rogers. And, you know, Rich Cooper really tried to make arrangements. You know, he talked to a lot of different property owners and couldn't get them to rent parking to him. And so I want to study that because it's an important issue that we try to create more parking capacity, but without paving over more.
Yeah, I actually, I've always lived in Ward 5. But I grew up on South Main Street in Florence. That's where I grew up. In fact, and my dad did. And my grandmother grew up in that neighborhood, so I've been Florence a long time. And I do own a building at 7 and 9 Main Street in Florence, which has retail on the first floor and three residences upstairs. And Rich Cooper's a great guy. He and I actually are high school classmates, so we grew up. He grew up, the house he grew up in was kind of where the Cooper's Corner is now. It was right next door. So we were the Cub Scouts and the Boy Scouts and everything together. So I do love it and think of myself as a Florence guy. I love some things about the Florence plan. And many of the items of it are going to take a while to mature. I love the concept of the property owners developing the front of their properties and sharing common parking in the back. Now, that's going to take a while to develop because the current properties are going to have to turn over and get changed around a little bit. But a lot of these plans take a while. You know, you make a plan, and then it takes 30 years for the thing to finally develop. But as buildings turn around, you then can execute the plan with this vision. And I thought the vision was pretty good. I actually, I'm really not missing the Rogers building. I was the person that sold it, and it was a real hard sell. It was a very nasty, poorly maintained building. The good news is that the businesses are doing so well there that it's a parking problem. And what Rich Cooper did was buy the building, take it down, and he's going to put his employees over there, which is going to free up 10 or 12 spaces in that part of Northampton, which is where there's been a real parking crunch on that part of the neighborhood. While Rich has been waiting for that, I didn't rent him spaces. I gave him spaces. So his employees spent spaces in my parking lot for over a year so that they get off the street, because I have plenty of parking in my building. So he's got people back there. So I know he could rent spaces, but he got some from me. Because I do think he's doing the right thing. But no, it's good that Florence Center is vital. It's the pizza capital of Northampton. If you want a pizza, that's the place to go. But I did like the plan, and what impressed me was there were more people have both of those planning meetings than there are in this room tonight. There was a lot of input, a lot of interest. And while there aren't a lot of people living on Main Street, what keeps Florence so vibrant is a block away, it's all residential. You know, Middle Street's all residential. High Street's all residential. Once you turn the corner past the Civic Center, it's all residential at North Main, South Main. So what keeps it really vibrant and what makes any, what makes any community vibrant is the fact that there were residents that are there all the time, from, you know, 6:00 in the morning, getting coffee at Cooper's on their way to work, till getting pizza at 10:00 o'clock at night. You know, there's always people there, and the residences are close. And the residents keep an eye on Main Street. You know, they know what's going on. They keep an eye on it. They keep a lid on it. So I love Florence, and the plan, I think, has got some very, very good components, some of which are going to take a while to develop. But that's the nature of a plan. You know, you make your plan, and then you pick away on it. When a building turns over, there's opportunity.
Anybody else?
I have a question, a statement. Just got here a little while ago, and I'm, thanks Kat, and I just finishing out with my homeless friends in downtown Northampton and doing a little bit of outreach. And I'm extremely low income, and I can barely afford the long-term apartment I'm in right now. But I'm grateful for it because when I go hang out with my homeless friends and I go home, I say, "I have a home," you know. And so, you know, all this pretty stuff, there's lots of pretty stuff, you know, in Northampton, lots of pretty things. But at night, when I go out and I check on my friends who are sitting on the steps, it's also pretty, you know. So there's this whole underworld in Northampton that is ignored constantly. And I grew up in Springfield and ghetto. I'm Volker. And I know what it's like to be like, we're talking about all of these sort of structural things, but like, my goal is to sort of like, connect the structural and the actual together. So I was talking with Lindsay Sabadosa, and she got to see it firsthand, you know. I'm texting her on my phone, "Kat," and then I'm like sitting with my friend who's paying, and I'm just like, "Okay." So there are discussions that need to happen, I think, beyond like the immediate structural things that people just need to sort of like, be brave and take a risk and just sort of step out of themselves a little bit and acknowledge that there's a, there are people in Northampton who aren't, I live across from college, and I can barely pay my rent, but I have a, my family's awesome. And I'm grateful, and I go away to town, and I, my friends are like, "Why, you know, why do you want a roof over your head when you have like, you could just be free?" They're like, "Yeah, you're just tired right now." You know, like, "I'm just going to go home. I'm going to be grateful to have a roof over my head, and I'm grateful for that." And I ask them, and I have Narcan in like, in my bag of my carriage, because one of my friends died recently. So I'm just kind of constantly on the streets. And so what I want to say is that, to sum it up, is just that we're all having these conversations about like structural changes. And without the actual sort of grassroots changes, these things are not going to, they're not going to work. Because you have to communicate with the other parts of the community that aren't represented, who are on the fringes, who are not, you know, who are poor living, low-income housing, that sort of thing. And I'm just tired of having this conversation. And so you'll see me sitting on the street with my homeless friends, you know, on my bike, just sitting with them, just hanging out, having conversations, listening to their stories. And I think that if we can translate that into a more active sort of policy in which we can like actually have these conversations openly on a forum like this, where we can share information with each other and try to, because...
Okay, I'm going to let the candidates here respond to that.
Yeah.
So if you guys want to make some comments about that, please.
Yeah, thank you, Kat. Yeah, I think, you know, the divide in Northampton between people who are living on the streets, people who are struggling, people who are low-income, and then all the way up to people who have a lot of money is very real. And I, how to move forward on it? I think the first step is having those conversations and acknowledging, you know, something I alluded to in the, or talked about in my introduction, is the making the, reaching out to people. You know, having events, say, at Meadowbrook. And that's something, you know, I've contacted Meadowbrook management, arranged to spend time there, talking to people. And it's just an essential part to, 15% of Ward 5 is public housing or Meadowbrook, which is often, not completely, but often affordable housing. And we need to have those conversations, and we need to do initiatives like the Housing First Initiative that I talked about. And working on also the opioid problem. So that's, it's, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
You know, this is one place that financially municipalities fall short. Because with the constraints of Proposition 2 and a half, we do, one of the major things that the CPA is supposed to fund is affordable housing. It does. It's an allocated portion of the CPA funds go to affordable housing. In the mayor's office, Peg Keller is a housing coordinator. Unfortunately, she's retiring at the end of the year, but she's been there for her entire career, working on housing issues more as a support person, but also guiding the CPA money to different projects. On a more personal level, I spent two years working on the DO On a more personal level, I spent two years working on the deal that turned Northampton Lodging into 155 Pleasant Street. That was a transaction that I did with, at the time, they were HAP, now they're Wayfinders. But that's something I did in my business life. My company also was involved in the transfer of the Lumberyard to Valley CDC to create the Lumberyard project. So the city's funds for housing mostly come from CPA funds only because that's really the only money we have to turn into those projects. And, you know, unfortunately, if you, if you look at the votes on those, both the Lumberyard and 155, I had to refuse myself from voting on them because in my professional life, I was actually involved in putting the transactions together. And I was the only, the only one that couldn't vote on it, but they were, you've got to be careful about conflicts. But those transactions made a big difference. We had about 11% affordable housing in Northampton prior to the Lumberyard coming on board and 155 Pleasant coming on board. So we're well above the 10%. That still doesn't mean that there's need, and a lot of the need is crisis need, just a place for the night. And, and that's an area that I wish the city had more money to do, to deal with. You know, it's the Interfaith people, it's the Grove Street people, one is, the Grove Street people is ServiceNet. In fact, Northampton sold them that building to make sure it permanently stayed that. And part of the, part of the sale to them was it had to stay in that use. They can't use it for anything else. Our biggest problem is resources. You know, the state has more money than we do, the feds have more money than we do. But we try and leverage our CPA money, and, and the mayor's office has a housing coordinator that I think is going to switch to planning, that position will switch over there. But it is, it is a real issue. And I really, there's a lot of things that we'd love to do that we don't have the resources for, but with Proposition Two and a Half constraints, it's hard.
Okay, do you have any questions for each other or? Give you a chance, we'll go to closing statements. Go right ahead.
Okay. So it's clear that you care about the city and have grown up here, and I, my question is kind of relating to your experience here for the, you know, living here all this time. Is how do we heal the divides that we have, say, between Hamp versus NoHo or people low income versus high income? How, how do we, you know, make those connections and, and move together as a city?
Good question.
Yeah. When I went away to college in the 70s, Northampton was NoHo, the early 70s. When I come back in the later 70s, we had suddenly become cool. You know, that's when the original round of developers, Sam Goldman, Michael Sisman, those characters all showed up. And basically with private capital, they came to this community from outside the community and said, "What a cool place this is." You know, all the upstairs of the Main Street buildings were empty. Those people with private capital turned Northampton around in a very short period of time. So Northampton has benefited tremendously from the influence of outside people. The real metamorphosis of Northampton, if you were around for it, didn't necessarily happen with local dollars, it happened with dollars from people from outside of town. You know, this new life that came in, these new resources that came in, these new visions that came in, made a big difference. And it's, it's still happening. So I, I don't, you know, people can conceive of the fact that the NoHo people have some reason to be apprehensive or not appreciate the people who have come to town more recently. This has started in the 70s, and it's been, it's been an absolute windfall for the city of Northampton, making a better place. So I absolutely have no issues at all with new peoples, with new ideas, with new revenue coming to Northampton. You know, we have turned over many, many times. Remember, we were abolitionists, we had utopian society before the turn of the century, a century ago. This has always been a really friendly, welcoming place to me. I don't see, you know, any resistance on, and frankly, next week, I'll be exactly 20 years older than you, I'll be 64 next week. And I saw more of it in, in, in the 70s and 80s than I do now. I think we're pretty homogenized now. I don't think anybody feels threatened, threatened by old Northampton, new Northampton, at least not, not the folks that I associate with. People who have come to town have brought resources, ideas, and have really rejuvenated the place in my lifetime, especially what happened back in the 70s, it's just tremendous.
Do you want to follow up? Is there any comments you want to make on that?
I think, you know, in talking with people throughout the war, I think there is still that division and the concern about, a lot of it comes down to affordability and, you know, essentially the, the, the costs of living and the people who've lived here for a long time struggling. But there's also plenty of people who've moved here who are struggling as well, especially with the rents, you know, continuing to rise. And, and so, yeah, in terms of healing the divides, I think, you know, we need to have more pro, but as I, you know, I talked about, like, being more proactive. So a lot of what I hear is that, that people don't feel listened to by the city. And that we have to make sure that people are really heard and that their input, for example, in, you know, new types of developments in their neighborhood, that their input is really heard. And so, and that, that's going to require a change in the current way the city is operating.
Do I follow up on that?
I'd like to follow up on it because I graduated from this fine institution in 1973. As I mentioned, in the 70s, the metamorphosis started to occur. Many of my classmates, they live in the hill towns because they can't afford to live here. One of the things that drove those prices were out-of-town incomes. Yes, friends, people came here because it was a great place to be, and they brought out-of-town incomes and could bid more for houses. So just, you know, don't lose track of the fact that a lot of the exterior influences from outside Northampton coming to Northampton actually increased the cost of housing in Northampton. And that's my business, I've been a Realtor for 40 years, I've seen it happen. You know, the wonderful couples that move here from Brooklyn, they liven up and enlighten our community, but they also bring dollars that aren't organic from Northampton and outbid for things. That does drive up the cost of housing, it's an economic fact, I see it every day. So you, you, people are accepting of new ideas, but at the same time, outside influences do make Northampton a more expensive place to live. You know, one of the incomes might be from out of town, you can see it all the time. So isn't it so much an old Northampton, new Northampton? It's a metamorphosis, metamorphosis that takes place because people come and go, they bring other realities, some of those other realities are economic. I just sold two affordable houses to two first-time homebuyers, one in Hoyo, one in East Hampton, because we couldn't find anything here. The average cost of a house in Northampton is low threes. That's more than some people can afford. To build a stretch code house, a 24 by 40 ranch, is over $400,000. So some of our own policies with good intentions have unintended consequences if they make houses more expensive. So at any number of different levels, outside influences are good, maybe they have negative effects somewhere else.
David, did you have a question? And then we'll shut it down here.
Well, a question and a statement. First of all, I want to thank Alex for running because frankly, no one's run against me in 10 years. And, you know, it sort of makes me think about things and sharpen my game up a little bit. And while I'd really like not to go right now, you know, I'm hoping you're not successful this time around. A lot of it is because we have such a big turnover on the council, and I haven't really brought anybody up to speed on municipal finance. I'd like to stick around at least for another term and, and get somebody up to speed to replace me. But I'm glad you're here, you're on a committee, you're on the Housing partnership. Quite honestly, I learned a lot in the 20 years between you and me. From 44 to 64, I've learned an awful lot. So, I mean, I hope to prevail and I hope to stay here because I think I have some important things to offer under the circumstances that we have a big turnover, we have an override, which is going to be financially challenging, we would do short budget, we have to hire a new auditor for the city next year. So there's a lot of things that I think I still have to offer. But I'm also going to be 64, I'm not going to stay forever. So it's nice to know there's somebody in the wings because until this year, nobody had even expressed interest in it. The one question I do want to ask you, and I don't want to, hopefully you've thought of it already, but if you haven't thought of it already, look into it. You're now a special municipal employee as a committee member. You're going to be a full-fledged, if you become a counselor, full-fledged municipal employee. Now, your company has a contract with the city and you also do some stuff for the DPW. If you haven't, you should get hold of the State Ethics Commission and see how you can modify that relationship because I think you're going to probably have to. And maybe you've done that already.
Yeah, I have. So yeah, there is a potential conflict. Pedal People has a $30,000 or so contract with the city to empty all of the trash barrels downtown. And in, in preparation for my, you know, potential win, we actually already modified the contract to be three years, which is automatically renewable because there's an exemption for that. So it won't come up for quite a while, but after that, it just has to be an open bid. And, which is great because I think that the way that, you know, Pedal People, the city has been really satisfied with the work that Pedal People done, has done. And in the initial bidding process, you know, we weren't, like, we can basically do that in a cheaper fashion because we don't have to have the big trucks to do it, we can just go right up to the barrels. So yeah, the State Ethics Commission has advised me on everything that needs to happen. And I, I am, you know, regardless of which way this goes, yeah, I think this has been, this is great to bring up all these issues. I'm hoping that if I do win, that we can work together and you will still help in and all, because I'm sure you're not in it for the $9,000 a year. So there, you know, there'll be so many opportunities for, and one of the other questions I had here was actually, you know, what does a new city counselor need to know? Not just for me, if I win, but for the four others, we don't have time for that. But, you know, I hope, hope that you're, you will continue to give your experience because it's been, you know, attending the meetings for the last year and a half, and whenever there's a finance question, I just really appreciated your answers on it. But I do think, and maybe this goes into the closing statement.
Take a minute for the closing, I mean, Alex, I mean, David, we'll consider that one, your closing statement, what you had before, if you have mine. Is that what you, what you brought before?
Oh, no, that's fine.
Okay. That's fine. Alex, just take a minute.
Sure, for the closing.
Keep the school committee on schedule.
Okay.
Close call.
Agreed. So yeah, I just wanted to close with some of the things that I will bring to the council and why I think, and I'm an important candidate. And I think that there, well, and maybe a little, a little to say that, you know, we have so much experience in the city government and in the employees that we have, the finance director and the mayor, and that I think we'll be able to figure this one out. So what you have to decide is decide if you want some, the new ideas that I bring and the engagement that I bring. So, you know, I want to know what you want and what's working and what doesn't work. And if I'm elected, you're going to be hearing from me regularly. I'm also a very thrifty and resourceful. In my personal life and with my business, we make do with very little and very conservative in my, in our expenses. And I think that the city is, you know, is not a rich city. And any place we can save money, that's where be more efficient. I, I want to find that. I am a business owner, but I'm also a worker in the sense that as a business owner, I understand the restrictions and the taxes and such that come down. But I'm also, we're a worker cooperative and we can see exactly how we have to pass those things along. So I have both of those perspectives. And I think a lot about social justice and, you know, part of that is listening to all voices and reaching out. And, you know, many people's life circumstance doesn't allow them to attend evening meetings, whether childcare, disability, or transportation, so making, reaching out for that. And I understand oppression and wealth inequality, and we need to create work and lobby for change in our tax code to be a more progressive tax system. And so that, you know, the people who are on low and fixed incomes are not the ones who are paying for the next override or, you know, disproportionately to their income. And then climate change, you know, our house of this world is on fire and there is an emergency and municipalities are taking the lead because the federal government and the state government are not doing enough. So I'm excited, I'm passionate, I'm dedicated, I'm interested, and I have time for this work. And I'm excited about, from the big picture to the little details. And I'm asking for your vote because change is coming here faster than we are currently ready, and I think we need to move together.
Can I add one more thing?
Yeah.
Very fast. Very fast. You know, the most important commodity that we have in life is time because we don't know how much we got, we don't know when it's going to end. I've given the city a volunteer service for 40 years, 14 years, as a city counselor. The most precious commodity I have, 14 years worth. One other thing that I wanted to mention is from our city charter. And when we changed our charter, this made things a little bit different. It's no city council or member of the city council should give orders or directions to any and city employee appointed by the mayor, either publicly or privately. So one thing to remember about us, everybody in the city works for the mayor, not for us. We can talk to them, we can ask them for things, but we can't tell them to do anything. They work for the mayor, and the mayor's office is very jealous that it protects that authority. Thanks.
All right, so Alex Jarrett and David Murphy. The school board candidates are up next. That includes Dino Levy from Ward Five, Kate Cardoso, Lonny Gold, and Susan Voss, who are running at large. We have a couple more chairs. Ward Five had originally two candidates, one of them dropped out. So our next Ward Five School Committee can, School Committee member will be Dino Levy. On the other hand, given that we only had one candidate for School Committee from Ward Five, we opened up the, opened up the platform here, the stage, for the at-large candidates as well. So here we have Kate Cardoso, Lonny Gold, and Susan Voss, who are also members of the School Committee. So do you want to, do you want to start with making an opening statement quickly here? And then we'll get out some questions, and we'll follow up, or I have some questions to get to, and then we'll open it up to the audience as well. And we'll try and keep within an hour.
Hi, everybody. My name is Dino Levy. I use she/her pronouns, and I am your Ward Five School Committee candidate. I have been, I am an experienced educator, an engaged listener, and an effective advocate, and I chose to run for School Committee to bring a fresh perspective. I've been an educator for over 15 years, I've been a school counselor, a teacher, an administrator, and through it all, I've had a very big focus on diversity and inclusion. I also have two kids, the oldest of whom is going to be a kindergartner next fall in the Northampton Public Schools, and I am strongly committed to ensuring that she and all students are supported and able to learn in environments that support them for who they are as opposed to who we expect them to be. And yet, our students of color are currently disciplined at a rate three times that of our white students. I've knocked on over 500 doors and heard far too many accounts of bullying at the middle school, at the high school, and most dishearteningly, at Leeds Elementary School. So as a member of the School Committee, I commit to bringing a focus on diversity and inclusion to the policy decisions. I also commit to ensuring greater levels of transparency and communication and to policies that work for working families. I've heard from voters whose kids need extra help after school but can't meet with teachers because they've got to catch that one bus home. I've also heard from frustrated voters who are, are missing opportunities to stay informed and share their ideas and concerns. And finally, I'm most driven by my strong desire to support teachers. They must be given the resources they need to support all students. And we need a long-term solution to teacher contracts and teacher salaries that will attract and retain our best teachers. This means working closely with our state representatives to fix the charter school funding formula and with our mayor to ensure education is always a top priority in the budgeting process. I'm committed to excellent schools, which means Northampton must not be in a position of having to choose between strong teacher salaries and student services. We need both. I want to thank the Bay State Village Association and Florence Civic Association for putting on tonight's forum. I'm tremendously, I have tremendous respect for the three candidates who are sharing the stage with me tonight, and I'm excited for our conversation.
My name is Kate Cardoso, I'm running for at-large. Why am I here? When I was Kate Boothellet, back and forth in second grades at Florence Grammar School, like my two daughters at Leeds... like my two daughters at Leeds right now, I never would have envisioned us running for school committee. When I started dating my husband at Northampton High School, right here, in 1997, I certainly wasn't thinking 20 years from now I would be Kate Cardozo, school committee at-large, and there would be signs up in town saying that. I'm here because last year was a difficult year for one of my children. Going to school became one of the hardest things for her due to anxiety, and the teachers and the support staff went above and beyond to both make her feel safe and challenge her to overcome her worries. At around the same time, I became aware of what was happening with the contract negotiations. And I, along with many other members of this community, realized how unfairly our teachers and school employees were being paid. I decided then that I needed to get involved. Campaigning to be in the school committee has been a real learning experience for me. I'm a corporate meeting planner, which means that I take thousands of little details and put them together to create successful conferences and group travel programs. I listen to my clients' vision and goals and then work with colleagues and vendors to plan and execute their vision within very strict budget parameters, budgets that range from hundreds of thousands of dollars to millions of dollars. What have I learned so far? I've learned that at our four elementary schools, approximately 45% of students are high-needs and 23% have disabilities. I've learned that a lot of kids, like one of my own, are really struggling with emotional and/or behavioral issues, and that puts a lot of stress on the teachers and the students. I've learned that how we're implementing the inclusion model needs to be reevaluated to make it more successful. I've learned that the charter school funding formula takes away too much from our public schools. What do I want to do on the school committee? I want to make sure that resources are distributed fairly between the schools, taking into account enrollment and student population data. I want to make sure that the classroom environment is conducive to learning and that it isn't causing unnecessary stress on students and teachers. I want to make the teachers and school employees feel heard and respected because they are such a critical part of the success of our schools. I want to make the school committee more collaborative, proactive, effective, and efficient through relationship building and a focus on creating change and positive outcomes. And finally, I want to increase diversity within the school employee population and on the school committee so that better reflects the student population. That's why I'm here. I'm here to make a difference.
Hi. My name is Ronnie Gold and I'm happy to be here with you and get to meet you as I talk about why I'm running for at-large for school committee. I have two daughters, Melissa and I have two daughters at the Bridge Street School in first and third grades. And I'm running because I'm committed to being a contributing member to our community because I've seen the power that an invested community has in strengthening their world for everybody. I want to be on school council because running a school district is a really complex science. And I believe that our community deserves somebody who's an experienced public educator and currently teaching in the public schools, who has a proven track record of collaborating within our community, and who is action-oriented and committed to listening and moving forward for everybody. I've been a public school teacher for 17 years. I teach elementary school now in the Springfield Public Schools. I have served on the Bridge Street School Council for the last three years, and I'm also a board member of the Ward Neighborhood Association. And all those opportunities, I think, all those experiences have created a great opportunity for me to be on the school committee because I understand the day-to-day life of what the teachers are going through and students are going through. I understand the challenges, I understand the celebrations that are there, and when I'm sitting on the school committee, I'll be able to see and understand what teachers are saying to us firsthand because I see it myself. As a Bridge Street School Council representative for three years, I was there when Bridge Street was struggling two years ago with the wins rollout, and I played a really important role in listening to all constituents because I was able to understand and deconstruct the complex education decisions for parents. And I was also able to respond to teachers because they understood I could understand their situation. As a instructional leadership specialist at my school in Springfield and being on the school council, I also understood what administration was going through and the tightness of the budget and what, and the challenges they faced. And so together with that, being on the Ward Three Neighborhood Association has showed me the power of that everything happens because the community gets involved. Nothing happens just because all of a sudden things pop up. It's the investment of people in the community that make that happen. I'm proud to say that I brought the walking school bus to the Bridge Street School, but it actually just came from Springfield where we had it already, and I thought this would be great for the Bridge Street School. And it came from a collaboration between the PTO, the school, and the Ward Three Neighborhood Association. Along with that, I'm action-oriented. I'm happy to say that this year, Bridge Street School won a $1 million state grant because of the walking school bus to increase pedestrian safety to Bridge Street. And again, that was something that I contributed to as leading a collaboration between the school, the city, the neighborhoods, and the teachers. I'm running at-large specifically and on to Ward Three because I also understand that in a district of this size, everything that goes on in the individual schools is going to impact every other school. And as we're seeing right now, there's challenges at Leeds with the social, emotional, behavioral issues going on there, similar to what happened at Bridge. There's a lot that could be learned from those individual schools. And I think that by...
Ronnie, let's save the recipe for your answers.
You got it.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for being here tonight. My name is Susan Voss, and I use she/her pronouns. I moved to Northampton 19 years ago as a founding faculty member of Smith's Engineering Program. My favorite part of this job is working with students and helping them to become thoughtful citizens. Along the way, Northampton has become my hometown. My kids have grown up here. My daughter Erin graduated from Northampton High School in 2016, and my son Jasper is currently a junior there. I am thrilled to be running for a second term as one of your at-large school committee members. Simply stated, I want our Northampton Public Schools to be both excellent and inclusive. I'm proud of my work during this first term. I listen to constituents and promote transparency, including by putting items on the agenda that deserve a wider community conversation. I proposed, and I am a member, of the newly-formed District Screen Time Committee, which is working to develop guidelines for usage of screens in our schools. And during recent contract negotiations, I provided early and strong support for our NACE members' compensation to be commensurate with that and surrounding communities. In addition to continuing this current work, I look forward to making progress toward the goals of excellence and inclusivity, continuing the work of integrating technology into our schools in a manner that promotes deep learning and includes an honest cost analysis. Budget-related issues such as setting priorities within our limited resources and continued advocacy at the state level for more funding to Northampton are also priorities. And I also want to share that I strongly support Northampton's ongoing commitment towards sustainability and will help craft school committee policies that are consistent with addressing our world's climate emergency. For example, I am researching external grants for electric school buses that could potentially both reduce our carbon footprint and save us money. I'm looking forward to our longer conversation tonight about these and other issues.
All right. I should mention too that the city will elect two of the at-large school district members. Let me ask you all, hundreds of Northampton families have chosen to send their school-age kids to charter schools and private schools instead of Northampton Public Schools. Why do you think this is happening and is this a concern for you? So let's go the other way around here. Susan, you want to start that off?
Sure. Why do I think it's happening and is it a concern? And I'll start with, is it a concern? And then I'll maybe talk a little bit about why it might be happening. Is that okay? So it's a concern because of the way our state budget is set up. Right now, a lot of our school funding comes through something called Chapter 70, and charter schools are through that same funding mechanism. And the way the state has set it up is that our city needs to pay tuition at charter schools. Our district schools lose money when that happens. And I have advocated for years, talking to our representatives, going to forums, making comments, that we need a different funding structure for charter schools. Why do I think it's happening? I think there's a lot of reasons. Charter schools are an available option for families, and our schools don't necessarily always work for every child. Families are looking to do what's best for their child. I genuinely think the more flexible our schools can be and the more supportive they can be of all students will help a lot in terms of having fewer students go to charter schools. But it's also for me a more complicated question, and we have to consider school choice in this whole question as well, which is a whole nother topic, and I don't want to take too much time. But there really are three public ways that we can fund kids to go to school: a charter school, our district school, and school choice. And at the state level, the way the money is set up is really not what I would do if I was making a law.
Okay. Ronnie?
Sure. I'll start also with the concern and why is the charter school a concern. I think as Susan shared, it's obviously a huge issue when it comes to the school financing. 200 students within Northampton are sending $2.5 million out of the district. That's when you total the amounts being spent in charter schools. And so the money issue is really big, but honestly, equally as big is the impact not having those children and those families committed to their community has, right? Because when you don't have a family in that, your neighborhood, attending the local public school, there's a void in that household, right? And there's a void on your street where there's kids that are not going to that school that are supporting it locally. And so you don't have the investment, not only of the students, but also of the families. And so that's a really big part, I think, that when we try to build a sense of community. Recently, I worked with the superintendent and the Bridge Street School to try to identify how many, and believe it or not, at Bridge Street School, nearly 50% of the kids that could go to Bridge Street don't go to Bridge Street. They either go to private or to charter schools. And so that's half of the kids in the neighborhood and half of the families that could be invested. I think why do they go to charter schools? On some levels, it's based on misinformation. It's this feeling and this idea that there's something else out there that everyone wants to go to that is better, but really, it's without having the opportunity to come into the schools and see what's really there. And so I think if we do a better job publicizing the great things that are happening in Northampton Public Schools and also reaching out to ask those families, why are you leaving? Not to say, hey, come on back, but let us know what it is it so that we can adjust or accommodate, if at all possible, to draw families to stay within us, within the schools. And so that's something big, I think, that we could do.
So as far as why charter schools, I do think...
It's more broadly charter schools and private schools.
And private schools. Sure. You know, we've talked a little bit already about the issues that there have been because of the inclusion model at Bridge and Leeds, I know at Ryan Road as well. And so if there are these stories circulating in our community about classrooms that are really struggling and kids that are really struggling, and it's not just the kids that have the high needs that are struggling, it's kids that do really well in school and they're, they're coming into classroom environments that are very stressful and chaotic, and they don't want to go to school anymore, and they're not learning because the teachers are so focused on handling behavioral issues that are, that are coming in, having in the classroom. So you can't blame those parents for wanting to find a better environment that's more conducive to learning for any child. So I do understand why it's happening because my children are currently experiencing some pretty stressful and chaotic situations in their classrooms right now. And the funding is, the funding formula is really, makes it that much more of a problem. And really, we should focus on that being the issue and not demonizing parents for making the choice to send their kid to a charter school or a private school. You know, Ronnie mentioned it, it's $2.5 million that our school, that our public schools are losing out because of charters. So that really, I think that needs to be the focus of our discussion around charter schools in particular. In private schools, there will always be private schools, and I think there is a place for them within our educational community.
Well, it's not that fun going last because my colleagues said some great things up here, many of which I agree with. So is it a concern to me? Yes and no. For the reasons that were mentioned, I think the concern to me is the funding formula and the funding that, the funding that is lost to our public schools when families do choose to send their kids to charter schools. I also agree with my colleagues that I believe all families should be able to find schools that meet the needs of their students. My hope is that we can make the Northampton Public Schools the schools that meet the needs of all students. And I think we have a little work to do to get there. I think we need to better fund our special education teachers. We need to listen to our special education teachers to hear what support they need in order to better meet the needs of our students and to collaborate with teachers in the classrooms. I think we can think about innovation that would allow families to feel like these schools are going to meet their needs and not feel like they have to go elsewhere. Colleagues have talked about Spanish Reversion schools, have talked about stronger arts programs and funding the arts. And I think if we can think in more innovative ways, better fund our schools, we can have smaller classes, we can have the stronger programs so that families say, I do want the best for my student, and that is here in the Northampton Public Schools.
They make you go last all the time. Let me follow up a little bit on Kate's comment here. She brought up inclusion and this brings up another sort of related issue. Superintendent Provost last year brought up the idea that we are facing, Northampton Public Schools is headed for a high-needs future, which is dealing with the high amounts of the budget going towards special education and full inclusion model of instruction, which was initiated first at Bridge Street School. Is that an inevitable course and are there downsides to the inclusion model you see? Is it the right balance that Northampton is taking? So we'll move along with this by Ronnie pointing you aside, then we'll move around this later.
So I would say, are there, you said, is there a downside to moving in the inclusion model? I would say the downside is if we go about it in an unprepared way. Inclusion is not anything new in public education. Inclusion has been around for decades. My wife is an amazing special education teacher. She used to teach in Holyoke and down in New York City, and inclusion has been going around in districts for many, many, many years. What Northampton is trying to do is how they're approaching inclusion. They want to try something differently. And what unfortunately happened was we put the cart before the horse. We rolled it out without being prepared correctly to initiate it. When it first came out in 2017 and sitting in those meetings, both myself and my wife, who's a special ed guru in many ways, we couldn't understand how they were possibly going to roll it out and how the school committee and superintendent made the decision to do it in that way because we didn't see how that was going to actually be effective. But we thought maybe there is some silver bullet that wasn't, we weren't aware of. Unfortunately, there wasn't a silver bullet and it wasn't rolled out effectively, but that doesn't mean that the solutions can't happen there. Very quickly, within a month's time or two months' time, Bridge Street School, they were able to adapt and adjust. So I guess, I would say that inclusion is certainly the right path to go on, but doing it with best practices and learning from districts and reaching out to find the right best practices and the research to prove first, how do we prepare a district for it? And then we roll out the inclusion and expand on it.
Okay.
So I do very strongly believe in the inclusion model, and I think that it was, it has not been implemented correctly with the, with the right resources. I also, Mr. Provost was right, Superintendent Provost was right. We are seeing more high-needs. I mentioned that 45% of our students are high-needs and 23% have disabilities. Those numbers, when I saw them, shocked me. So that's definitely the case and that's definitely the trend, and those numbers will probably increase. And that's just at the elementary schools and an average for the elementary schools. I think that, you know, Ronnie mentioned that we need to learn from other districts. We need to learn from schools within our own district about how to implement it better. And Leeds should have known what Bridge Street had gone through so that we weren't in a situation now where we're facing the same challenges. So we need to, yes, look outside and see best practices for other districts, other states. We need to also be, I think, communicating more within our own schools to make sure that problems in one, the changes are made so that they don't happen in other schools.
Yeah.
So yes, to what my colleagues have said, and I would add to that, given that there is an increase in high-need students, that we need to also take that into consideration when we're doing budget allocations. And with higher, with higher numbers of high-need students, we also need better student-teacher ratios. We need more help in the classroom. We need our special education teachers to be able to partner with the classroom teachers so that they are equipping the teachers with the tools they need to meet the needs of the students. And we need to see that partnership stronger, and we need to see the funding for that increase. I think in terms of the inclusion model itself, I agree with my colleagues that inclusion is the way to go, and we have to really look at the data to look at how has it been implemented and learn from the schools where we are seeing issues, where we can very much improve on those practices.
Thanks. And I'll also agree with a lot of what has already been said and also... And I'll also agree with a lot of what has already been said, and also share that I joined the school committee after the wins model was implemented, so I've been learning about it too. And what I come out with is, I completely believe in the idea of wins, and that's an inclusion model. We started it at the elementary school in our district with the idea that, previous to this, and I don't have all the programs because I wasn't part of the school committee, but there was a special program for certain students, for example, students with autism at Bridge Street School, and other students with other learning challenges. And they were separated. And what inclusion means is, let's integrate kids that are capable of being in the classroom with their colleagues in the same grade, and let's let everybody learn from each other, and these differences have a lot of value. And so the goal of this is really strong and good for everybody, and it's what people want. At the same time, I said to somebody the other day, "I feel like everything I've ever done on the school committee related to this wins model has been reactionary." Like, "We need money to fix this, we need money to fix this." And what we're lacking is a plan, and parents have been asking for a plan. And I will continue to put pressure on the people who can make this plan, because it's up to the school committee to say, "You need a plan, let's get it going." But we're not the professionals to make the plan. We need the superintendent to lead it, and we need to find out, how many more special ed teachers do we have, so that every child can learn in this environment? And just to echo some of the other things that were said concerning the charter school, we want excellence in education, academic excellence, other things too, but academic excellence for every kid. And when you go in an elementary school classroom, and there's one teacher for twenty-four children, and some of them are having, really, not their fault at all, behavioral problems, it affects all of the other children too, and there's so many hours lost to learning. Where I am left sitting, having spoken with numerous parents and teachers, is we need a lot more resources to be able to educate our kids at the level that we expect as a community. And I'll just also add to it that, this is elementary school, but these kids are all growing up, and the wins model is going to continue through all the grades. And so, really, we need to hear from the community. We need community conversations about what choices we're going to make, because we do have limited resources. And from where I sit, we have to make sure every kid's day at school is productive and that they're learning. And there's going to be some hard choices to make. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. I think that we have a lot to learn, and talking to other communities about how they did this is going to be super important moving forward.
Let me follow up with that one about hearing from the families. The school district has previously surveyed Northampton families about the strengths and weaknesses of individual schools and the district as a whole. Would you support making this an annual effort and extending the survey to include recent graduates, faculty, and staff? And would you commit to publicly sharing the results? So here, let's move on. Start with Kate in this panel.
Absolutely. I don't see a reason why we wouldn't do that. And I come from corporate America, and data and surveys are a critical part of any success in a corporate environment. So I would say absolutely yes, and there should be forums and meetings around the survey to talk about the results and talk about, not, the data's great, but what do you do with the data too? So there's got to be, there's got to be a model by which we can take that information and make some decisions about what to do with that information. So I would absolutely recommend that we do that, and then create some dialogue and communication around the results of that.
Okay. Dana?
Yeah, I also work in, I have worked in numerous institutions where I have very heavily relied on survey data in order to drive strategic plans, and I would love to see Northampton better incorporate data into the strategic planning process, to make sure that we have smart goals, to ensure that we have, we are documenting the results, and we are showing the impact of the programs that we are implementing. That said, I also strongly believe in transparency and sharing the data when surveys are conducted. And I also know that districts need to have time to implement programs. And so I think, would I do a survey every year? I'm not sure, because I also know about the resources it takes to conduct a survey. I would absolutely want a regular survey that does inform the district and that have that data, inform the planning, and then to ensure that there are measurable outcomes that would be shared in response to that data. We also want to support our educators and ensure that we have time to implement innovative solutions to the data that we're collecting.
Susan?
Again, going third, I'll say that I really agree with everything that's already been said. I absolutely support surveying and sharing data and figuring out the appropriate timeline. The surveys that have been shared with me as a school committee member over the last two years have been really varied in their quality. And when I say that, there's many times where there's such a small response, and I wonder. So I would just add to this conversation that if you're going to do a survey, let's make it a really good survey that people are willing to answer. It has the right, the correct number of questions on it, the correct level of detail, and let's make sure we get a really good response to that survey, so that we're not talking about such a small percentage of parents that you don't know if it's reflective of what you're hearing.
Okay. Rodney?
Just two things on this survey thing. I'm a very data-driven teacher and person, and I think clearly we need to collect that data. But it's only relevant if we're able to react to it and do something with it. So to have specific data is valuable only if we're able to respond to it and have structures in place to say, "Okay, we have a certain amount of money, certain structures and systems in place to do something about it." Because having data for data's sake doesn't nobody any good. And so I would just want to make sure that we're prepared to invite feedback if we're willing and ready to make changes and respond to it. And the second thing, I think communication, it sort of goes to the whole idea of communication. And I think that there's many ways that we can increase it beyond just doing surveys. If elected, I've already spoken with the Gazette about this, and I would like to see, I don't know if you guys see, every month or so, there's an Ask Jo Comerford question now, and she responds to that. I'd like to see in the education section, an opportunity for school committee people to have that, to where every month or so, a school committee is responding to questions within the Gazette. I'd love to see opportunities where there are evening and after-school hour coffee chats with one or two school committee people every few months or every couple of months, to give people the chance to really face-to-face and have conversations. And then lastly, I think we could really develop a robust online communication system, so that parents can provide feedback and everyone can see what other parents are saying, sort of along the lines of what Kate was saying about the whole Bridge Street and Leeds situation. If there was an online platform where we could have actually seen, hey, what did Bridge do? What was their plan? They would be able to just go into that database. So I think the school committee could do a lot in those areas to increase communication.
Okay.
And here's an opportunity for your feedback here. If you have any questions for the council, for the school committee candidates, please ring them up. Erin?
Yeah, I'm kind of ignorant, maybe, on the choice of schools and the charter schools and things like that. But do they have a percentage required of high-need students? And why not? And so what would you do to affect that?
Where was Tom? Let's play for the answer briefly.
That's a really great question, because no. And that's part of the issue with charter school funding, is that charter schools are not held to the same requirements and standards that public schools are. So public schools are required to meet the needs of students with special needs. Charter schools are not. Charter schools can decide, these are students who we choose to close our doors to. And so this is one of the precise reasons why the funding mechanism is really out of balance and needs attention. What can we do about it from the school committee level is also a tricky question, because I think what we need to do is garner community support. And I think one of the things I'm hopeful for is that as a member of the school committee, I can have more regular conversations and be in dialogue with the community about what kinds of conversations we're having and how folks in the community can also support the work of the school committee. And that does mean looking, because the charter school, right now, the charter school funding formula is coming from the state. And so we need to garner support so that we can go to our state representatives, who are incredibly supportive of this conversation, but to take that to the state level to change the funding formula.
Susan, what?
So there's, I think, three primary charter schools that draw students from Northampton, if I'm counting correctly. Chinese Immersion, Hilltown, and Pioneer Valley Performing Arts Schools. And if you look at the numbers, at each of those schools, they're quite different. Overall, it is true that we have a lot higher percentage in our district of high-need students that are much more expensive to educate, and that is a fundamental difference and problem, and partly why we have such a gap in our money in terms of covering the cost of educating these students. But I just want to add that to what we heard, because each of those has a really different story. There's been a lot of activism in the community to point those numbers out and to point out that we just need more support in our district schools, because we are educating a different population than the charter schools are. And, you know, we could go on for an hour about that, but I'll leave it.
Okay, Rodney?
And so, to clarify on one piece of it, the way you get into a charter school is all through the lottery, right? And so any parent can apply for it. If you have a child with severe special needs, you would think twice before sending them to a charter school that does not have those services already. And the probability of that many kids applying there is incredibly low, right? So at, for instance, at Hilltown or at the Chinese Immersion School, the number of kids that need those services are not applying there because they wouldn't get them, right? They wouldn't, or the school would have to build all those services. So if a child did get in there by the lottery, PBPA or any charter school would have to meet those kids' needs, and they would have to spend a long road of building up those means. So that's a big reason why parents of kids with special needs or ELL students are not applying there, is because the services don't even exist yet. Something to really know about that's fascinating, in both the charter and the private school world, you can bring your child back to the Northampton Public Schools to get assessed and get services. So if I send my child to the Common School or the Campus School, or if I send my child to a charter school, and I want my child to get evaluated, they might come to Bridge Street School. They might come and get speech services after school at Bridge Street School. So it has a double impact in the sense that we still have to provide that. So there's a lot of inequities within that. And I think that's where, just in closing on this, that communication becomes a piece of it, because I think if families understood that are sending their children to charter schools, the level of impact it's actually having on their neighbor's children, they might think a little bit more before making such a choice. Because I don't think any parent's going in there saying, "I know that this is negatively impacting my neighbors, and I'm still going to do it anyway." I think they don't necessarily understand how dramatically it does impact it.
I think all of my colleagues answered that question really well, unless you have other questions. But I just wanted to follow up on what you just said, Rodney, and is that it said, I think as part of the contract negotiations with the teachers over the last year, that was one of the good things that came out of it in terms of education, is that we as a community became aware of the big number that we are paying towards charter schools and the amount of money that's coming out of the public schools. So I do think that there is more awareness now around the cost of charter schools. And there has been certainly a negative impact, as I think families are feeling pressure and heat if they are sending their kids there. And I don't certainly feel like that's justified, but I do think that there is more awareness about it. And hopefully, it will make a family think twice about sending their kid to a charter school if they know the impact on our overall district.
Okay. Is there another question? Deb?
To follow up on the idea of collecting data and what you do with data after you collect it, and the idea of communicating with parents. I think a lot of people don't know what school committee actually can and cannot do. And I'm wondering how that information could be conveyed to parents. I mean, people might get very angry or upset with the school committee for certain things that they think are happening when schools are not happening, when schools, and yet, how could you, as school committee people, get that information back to parents? Like, yes, your concerns are valid, however, they are not necessarily addressed through school committee, or this is, this could be addressed through school committee.
So I certainly can start. I think Susan's going to have the most information for us based on that. And actually, if you wanted to start, I don't know, it's okay.
Thank you. I think that's a really good question. And one thing we've talked about in our retreats while I've been on school committee is, how do we share that kind of information with parents? And I think if you were to contact any school committee member, they would try to explain the answers to that sort of question. And the real answer is, as a school committee member, I have three major things that I'm supposed to do. I oversee the superintendent, I oversee and help set the budget, and my ultimate, and I help set, the school committee sets policy. So those are the big three. And then you could certainly go in the weeds within those three. But if I had to say the three things, that's what we do. And we don't micromanage curriculum, we don't micromanage anything about any of the schools. And the structure is, we oversee the superintendent. The superintendent oversees the teachers, oh, sorry, the principals, and the principals oversee the teachers. And so when people come to us with specific things at a school level, we can guide them and say, "Well, you need to talk to your principal." But when it gets to the point where, you know, if I hear about things at the level of kids are feeling bullied or things like that, I would certainly tell the superintendent, "I am hearing this, I am concerned." And as a school committee member, I keep track of these things and bring them up. But it's really the job of the superintendent to go to the principals, and the principals to take care of what's going on in their building. Trying to think of what else I could share with you about that. Certainly, I think it's so important for community to tell me what policies are working, what's not working, where we don't have good policies. People email me all the time, and I'm really committed to getting back in touch. And when I feel like it's not an email, I ask people to call me. I have, I was just telling somebody, I have probably a couple of issues each week that I try to talk to constituents about, and that's another really important piece of being a school committee member.
One more question?
I just wanted to add a piece to it, because a big thing that the school committee does do is approve the budget. And the budget's a moral document, and it's also really what dictates what's going on in the schools. So while we, while the school committee, and correct me if I'm wrong, while we don't say what curriculum can, should be used or not, the school committee does approve the purchase of certain curriculums, right? And so we do have the power, whether it's an ELA curriculum, a math curriculum, we then can say, you know, "How many of us are going to vote to do that expenditure, if I'm not mistaken?" And so recently, a big thing that happened was they bought a new elementary school curriculum for, I want to say, three hundred thousand dollars a few years ago, I forget the exact number. But there's a lot of free available curriculums out there. School committee members could, together, say, "You know what? This is not an expenditure that we're going to approve." I think something that Susan's done a great job on is pushing them on the expenditures around the laptops and whether or not we're going to be purchasing those. If there is, if there's enough people in school committee who are saying, "We're not, we can't approve of this purchase," that can stop an event from happening, a purchase from happening in any capacity. Behavioral, curricular, staffing, whether we're approving positions or not. So I think if we look at it that way, then there is a lot of impact school committee can have.
As far as communication with families and constituents, I think that it's really important that school committee members spend more time talking to families, and I know there are limitations to this, but spending some time in the schools as well. And again, I know that there are limitations to that, but I'm at Leeds School a lot, and to be in the halls and to hear what's going on is a really, really valuable way of getting a good idea and a good understanding of the dynamics and the culture and any potential issues that are happening. So I do think that, as much as they can, school committee members should be spending time within the schools.
Thanks. I just have two quick points to add to what my colleagues have said. One is, you know, I think if there's a concern that somebody in the community has that is not able to be addressed by the school committee, I don't think it ends there. I don't think it's simply, "Sorry, that's not what the school committee does." I think it goes back to the conversation of, "How can we work together to ensure we're addressing this?" And maybe the school committee isn't taking this up specifically, but we can support you in creating community forums or in figuring out the alternative paths. The other piece that I think is really important for us to be aware of and to articulate is that one of the roles of the school committee is to oversee the superintendent. And if there are issues happening in the schools that administrators are not addressing, it's the superintendent's job- addressing, it's the superintendent's job to hold those administrators accountable. And it's the school committee's job to then have the conversation with the superintendent to say, "We'd like to see these issues addressed, and we'd like to see the data that is showing that they're being addressed." And so, I do think while there are certainly some issues that can't be directly addressed by the school committee, there are a lot of opportunities and avenues to ensure that the conversations are happening at the right level.
Okay. Thanks. Do you have a question?
Full disclosure, Kate Spahn. So I have a statement, first of all, and that is, I don't think you can overestimate how much each parent feels about the education of their particular child at that particular moment. And to think that, if parents knew that sending their kid to the charter school was taking money away from other kids in their neighborhood, I still think they would do it if they heard that things were terrible in the public school or in a particular grade or class that their child would go to. So that's the statement. The question is this: I am surprised that the school committee, the superintendent, whoever it is, doesn't have the mentality of a first responder. When things went down at Bridge Street School a few years ago, we're close friends with one of those kindergarten teachers, it was impossible. So here we are, two years later, and the same thing is happening in many classrooms at Leeds School. And I don't know that anyone would say, "Bridge Street School has been fixed." I'm sure they're still dealing with issues there, too. There should be a pot of money, a group of educators, who are able to go in immediately and try to address that problem, and I just don't see that happening. Is there a way to create that kind of response?
Is that a question? Okay. Do you have a question?
Yeah, not Kate.
I don't want to ask Kate. Go on.
So, in living through, my daughter was in kindergarten at the time of all of this happening at the Bridge Street School. And I think, in terms of how to address it systematically, I really think it comes back to communication. Because in many ways, the parents and the teachers at Bridge Street School were on the run. I mean, we reached out in every possible way, and to the point where I was with parents sitting in the superintendent's office, saying, "Look, this is what needs to happen, you know, like, we are hearing from teachers, this is..." But it was independent of any other school, you know? And you didn't hear in the school committee meetings about this in relation to all the other schools. And so, that communication doesn't cost money, right? So that's the big thing. Communication doesn't cost money, and it actually has an amazing power. So as I've been hearing about what's been happening at Leeds, it just is surprising how it's recurring again, yet we've already experienced this and gone through with it, right? And so, I agree with the first responder mentality, that problems are going to erupt, but if you've experienced something once before, you should exactly know how to experience, how to address that problem. And I think that as long as we have a track record of the information and we know the steps that were taken, then we can go in and push that. But if it's done just by some teachers and some parents and some principals in an office, then it's not being recorded. So I think the school committee can really go far to opening up those types of communication across the schools.
Kate?
Sure. So, to the charter statement that you made, I agree with you completely. I do think that there are a lot of families that hear that Hilltown Charter, for example, is a great school, and so they just decide to send their kid there. So it was really in those kinds of situations where I would say, if they knew the impact of that choice on the overall budget, then maybe they would, to make it less of a, less easy of a choice. But of course, there will always be people that want to send their kids to charter schools for whatever reason. As far as having a first responder team available for situations like this, I agree with Ronnie. Let's start with the cheap and easy way of just creating a better, a better way of communicating with each other so that we can potentially fix issues without costing any money at all. And if that doesn't work, sure, let's have a team of specialists, of experts, that can go in and take care of it in a situation like this.
I do agree, communication is important, but I also think so is money, so is financing and funding the initiatives that need to be funded. And if we implement something and realize, "Shoot, we missed the mark, we didn't fund it appropriately, we didn't staff it appropriately, we didn't train our teachers so that they're prepared," we've got to go back and then take corrective steps. So yes, to the first responders, and to a point that Susan made earlier, yes, also to being proactive. We've got to be able to look ahead and forecast what's coming so that we're planning from a fiduciary standpoint, and we're prepared to be able to meet those needs that are coming as well.
So, I agree with you, and as somebody who's currently on the school committee, I have to take some responsibility for this. I can honestly say, last spring, when we did the budget, there was no sharing with us that this was coming. I didn't know, but I learned. And the past two weeks since I've learned of this, I have had knots in my stomach. I feel terrible for what I'm hearing. I've talked to at least 10 parents at Leeds School. Right now, it really mirrors what we all read about in the paper at Bridge Street two years ago, and it's from what I spoke about earlier. Relatively larger classes with a few high-needs kids in them that are, you know, they need to be taught and they need to get the support they need, but the other children are not getting what they need, and we have to fix it. And if you watched the school committee meeting on Thursday night of last week, we had public comment about it, and you saw me, I often speak up about a little out of the box and ask some hard questions. And I did ask some hard questions. I wanted to know about some positions being made at the high school, and should we be doing less there and thinking about Leeds? And at least I got it talked about. I would be bringing it up with the superintendent, I have a meeting with him next week, I'm going to talk about it. But I think, you know, at Thursday night's school committee, we talked about redundancy in internet switches, and I think that's a really good word here. We need some redundancy in the adults in the classroom when we're going with this wins model. And the problem is, we have limited resources, and I think next budget season, which really needs to start now, because we have some hard conversations, but people would say it starts in January, we're going to have hard decisions to make, because to afford the amount of redundancy that I think we probably need, which moves well beyond elementary school, because it really does seem to be a high-needs future, there's more and more children for a variety of reasons that need more support, something's going to have to go. And I think that really needs to be a community conversation, and the school committee needs to figure out ways to have forums where we can hear from the community, what are our values? Because there isn't enough money to fund in the budget what we need. You know, I think we all want librarians. We haven't had librarians in the elementary school in years, but we certainly need kids to be safe in our classroom and also be able to have time to learn. So that's what I can share at this point, but I think we have a lot of work to do.
Let's take one more question, and then go to closer safety. Is that, may I have a question, Ron?
Me?
No, I'm curious, you probably have one there, in the back there. Sorry.
I have a two-parter. I'm, I'm, I'm just a little bit from the conversation that went on about laptops for students, but I want to ask a question that's a little bit broader about technology. I think that clearly we need to be training our kids to be technology-ready and technology-savvy to be competitive as they move into this, into the future. But my questions are about, you know, how do we balance that with teaching a whole range of other kinds of skills? You know, on the one hand, parents are saying, you know, "My kids are on their screens all the time." So how do we keep them off their screens, yet encourage them to use technology, become really proficient in technology, and excel in technology? But the other part of it is, I understand that in the city, we're trying to have kids from third grade through 12th grade supplied with individual laptops. That's an enormous budgetary expense, and we're talking about all the ways in which we don't have enough money. I'm wondering how each candidate feels about that kind of budgetary expense. And I'm also curious about the GoGuardian piece, which is this spyware that's put onto the computers that is monitoring every site that a child goes on. And I have concerns about what's happening with that data and all kinds of things related to that, and I'm wondering what each candidate thinks about the need for the laptops being given to kids from third grade to 12th grade, how do we balance it with other skills, and then whether or not we need surveillance technology or spyware put onto each of these laptops that is being given to the children? Sorry, that was a quick one.
Is that Alicia back there? Is that Alicia Klein back there?
It is.
Okay, I thought that was her. All right. Dean, if you want to start?
Sure. I have, I have some issues with the way generational data gets collected, but I attended a really thought-provoking talk recently about Generation Z, which is our current high school students, and some of the issues that are coming up because of the lack of balance that you're talking about. Some of the real strengths in the use of technology and some of the over-reliance in technology that is creating a lack of ability to then engage socially. And so, I really appreciate your question, because I strongly believe there does need to be a balance. Yes, our students need to be able to be, have strong skills in the STEM fields, they need to be able to use technology in innovative ways, and they also need to be able to create and contribute to cultures that are respective and inclusive of all people. They need to know how to engage at the interpersonal level, they need to know how to question and think critically about the messages they're getting from society, and so there does absolutely need to be that balance. Do our students need their own laptop as third graders? I'm hesitant to say this, because it might be controversial, but no, I don't think they do. I've worked in a number of schools where there are laptop parts, where laptops can be brought out and provided to students when they're doing something. I've heard some really tremendous stories about some really innovative ways, students at Leeds were using laptops and were using technology. And then I heard that we lost the person who was doing those really innovative and creative projects, and now students at Leeds are using laptops to take notes. And that's, our third graders don't need to use laptops to take notes. I think there are really creative and innovative ways to use technology, and that's where we should be using them. Does every third grader need a laptop? I don't think so. Do they need spyware? No, because our kids are smart enough to know how to disable it. I have heard stories of students who are sitting in the corner, watching YouTube videos and finding their favorite shows, and part of me says, "Good for you for figuring out how to do that," and shame on whoever's in that space for not creating innovative enough and creative enough and engaging enough curriculum that's going to keep those students from wandering off and finding something else to do. So I don't mean to sound overly critical. I think technology is really great if used in the right way, and yes, we've got to find that balance.
We'll keep on going down this way. Okay. Kate, one.
So, as far as technology, I do think it's a really, really big issue. My husband's actually in IT, so he has some strong feelings about this as well. I think that we need to really make sure that both personal devices and school-provided devices are monitored and are being used appropriately, both within school and outside of school. I do, I do think that it was, I think it was the Chromebook program with the laptops going home. I'm conflicted on that, because I do think that there are some students that need to have access to a school-provided laptop at home, because there are no other devices for them to use at home. And a lot of the students do have devices at home. So to make it a more equal playing field, I do think that there is a place for that. As far as laptops and these devices being used in school, I have also heard that they are being used to watch shows on YouTube, and that whole classes are dedicated to being on a laptop, and they're not, they're not computer classes. So I do think that there needs to be a lot of involvement of the school committee on what's happening with devices, both personal and school-provided, during school hours, and if the devices are going home, we really need to be talking about and thinking through rules around that.
So, a couple things here. So one piece is, technology is transformational for educators. As a public school teacher, I've seen it firsthand, how simply having the available technology changed the classroom. Professor Muller and I, she's a professor at Smith College, her and I developed a partnership where my students had one-to-one mentors at Smith College, where they would read books independently, hardcover book, they would sit there, and then my students would email their Smith mentors back and forth, and they would have this big, amazing experience and love of learning, because they had a partner somewhere else that was available. So many things were possible for that, but the only reason that happened, in all honesty, is I'm a Google-certified teacher, and I am a Microsoft innovative educator. I got trained on those programs, I had this skill set to apply technology to be meaningfully used by my students. And I think unfortunately, too many times, districts are putting the cart before the horse, and they think, "If we buy everyone one of these devices, they'll learn how to use them," rather than investing in teachers and saying, "Listen, how can I train a few teachers to make this be used effectively? And then if they can do it, let's turn Kia into other teachers as well." Springfield Public Schools, every child from, I'm in a school of 850 students, every child from kindergarten to fifth grade has their own personal device. And for the teachers who know how to use them, it's amazing how the kids can take work home, back and forth from school. Kids who never were doing homework are doing homework now. Kids who didn't have access to books before are reading them on their laptops. However, that's not every teacher. It's the teachers who know how to use them. So I think we need to correct how we, how we train teachers first and give them the skill set before we go out and buy anything like that. Regarding the data tracking, I'm definitely concerned about that in many levels, but, you know, now I'm on the Screen Time Committee along with Susan. I was selected by the mayor and the superintendent to be on that committee with them because of my experience with the technology. And if we don't have something, we're going to regret what does happen to students unexpectedly because someone had access to their account. And so, there needs to be a fine balance, right? We don't send students to school and not think that the teacher is monitoring if they're leaving the classroom or not, right? Like, we expect that, no, my child, if I send you to my child, if I send my child to school, they're going to be in the classroom, right? They're not going to leave and go down to town, or they're not going to walk away and do something else. In that same level, we need to do that with technology in a safe way.
Okay. So I've been the most outspoken person on the school committee about these kinds of issues, and I'll try to just summarize it. A lot of people have said things that I agree with already. What I think bothers me the most is, right when I arrived on school committee, it became clear we were moving to a one-to-one Chromebook program with absolutely no input from the school committee, and I felt like this was wrong. There should be policies at a district level, and the school committee should have a say for so many reasons. And, you know, I'll start with, so we had a lack of transparency and a lack of conversation, lack of conversation with the community. Parents were not part of this conversation about, "We're about to send these Chromebooks home with you, and you're going to now be in charge of your kid's screen time 24/7 if you're in seventh grade or higher." And then there's the whole budget part of this. It's expensive, and, you know, I'm put in an awkward position, because I think we shouldn't be spending as much money on this many Chromebooks, yet our school system is desperately in need of money for teachers. And so, it's unfortunate how it's played out. I think, so I teach engineering at Smith College. I think technology is super important, yet for my 200 engineering students in our program, we have 20 laptops that they share for particular software. And what I've been saying all along is, we absolutely need to integrate technology to our classrooms, but the idea that every child 24/7 needs access to their very own laptop, to me, seems excessive. Prior to this, we had carts in the classroom, and this is really what inspired me to ask for the Screen Time Committee, which is bigger than just computers, but computers are a big part of it. If every third, fourth, and fifth grader has access to their very own Chromebook, how many hours are they spending on it during the school day? And why can't we figure out a way to share and have two students per computer? And nobody's been really able to answer that question. And there's all sorts of fantastic writing about it, and one I will point you to is a New York Times piece called "How Google Took Over the Classroom." There's a lot of reasons for big companies to come in and say, "Every kid needs their very own computer." There's a lot of money involved, and I think communities are being told, "This is the thing to do, get every kid their own computer." And Northampton's smart enough to have conversation about it and decide, "Is this what we need?" One argument is, there are kids that don't have access at home, and I am absolutely supportive that for those families, we should provide the access they need. Prior to going to this one-to-one program, we had library, we had loaning systems of Chromebooks out of the library, and we still could have that. The high- The high school union, which has done an enormous amount of work in this area, did a survey and came back and shared that 92% of high school students have access to the internet at home and have a computer. And so, you know, maybe 20% need to borrow the computers. But to buy a new computer in this day where we're worried about climate change and electronic waste and trying to create less trash does not make a lot of sense on top of the cost of it. And then just briefly, in terms of learning, I think we need more conversations about how do we integrate technology? And Ronnie, Ronnie shared a lot of really good stuff at the last Screen Committee meeting. He is so good at this stuff. And we need more conversations with experts about that so that we have deep learning going on in our schools facilitated by this tool of a computer, which everybody needs to know how to use, instead of this idea of just learning to Google for information. Our kids need to be able to solve problems that we don't know the answers to, that they can't just go Google. Yet they also need to be able to use the tools of the computer. And there's a really important balance there that we haven't really talked about at all. And finally, in terms of the GoGuardian. GoGuardian, for those of you who don't know it, is a fairly, you can go Google it and learn more about it. It tracks where the students go. And on one hand, that keeps them safe and, you know, the school can prevent, can know where everybody's gone. On the other hand, the company has done some really questionable things in the past and clearly keeps track of everywhere our students are going and potentially has to turn that information over to law enforcement. And so when this first came up, I said, well, the ACLU says this is a really important topic to talk about in your community. You need to tell parents and students that if they're on these Chromebooks, everything they're doing on them is being tracked and saved. And I give the high school students a lot of credit because the student union at the high school took that and made sure that a policy got modified. And I think the city council, they played a role in it as well. So that everybody knows, should know what's going on. And that was a big step, and it took many months, and I'm glad we at least got to that. But it took, it wasn't, it didn't just happen.
All right, thanks. Well, our hour is up, but I would like to give you all a chance to make the closing statement for a minute or a minute and a half. So Ronnie, do you want to go first? We'll move down this way. Right down this way. Susan, and then Deanna, and then Kate.
In closing, I appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation with you. I hope on November 5th, when you go to vote and you vote for two at-large representatives, that you see a value in having someone who is currently a public school teacher, who can understand what's happening in the everyday classroom, someone who's been through school council and has worked with school councils in difficult times to transition them, and someone who is a proven collaborator and has really learned how to work across lines and sees and plays a team-first mentality. I think that teachers, administrators, parents, we're all on the same team to try to do the best for our students. And I hope you consider me for your vote on November 5th.
So our educational system needs to be updated to meet the needs of kids where they are right now. Because life has changed so much in the last couple of decades, and our system has not kept up. I have so much love for this town, and I want it to be a better place. In particular, for all of the children who have the privilege of taking care of and educating in our public schools. Lastly, it's an honor to be included in this group of candidates and the candidates that aren't here. I have been impressed by all of them because of who they are as people and their diverse and accomplished experiences and backgrounds.
I think there's been a lot that's been illuminated in this conversation about the work that's needed moving forward to really think proactively instead of just being reactive. I think there's a great deal of potential on the school committee currently on this stage here. I think there's, I can't think of a single person who goes into education, who goes into teaching, who's on a school committee, who's in, who is an administrator, who doesn't care deeply about kids, who doesn't care deeply about thinking critically and teaching and really teaching our students to change the world. And I think there are ways for us to thoughtfully do that, to do that better, to really think about how we're using our resources, how we're working with teachers. Our teachers who are on the ground know what they are, know the issues that students are facing better than anybody. And we've got to create more opportunities for those teachers and those educators to have a voice in the decision-making process. So I'm thrilled to have this conversation, and I know this isn't where this conversation ends. I'm hoping to continue this conversation with community members to continue to hear your ideas, to continue to hear what you're struggling with so that we can continue to bring those very important issues to the school committee to create some change.
Thank you. And I want to thank the Bay State Village Association, the Florence Civic Association, Mark, the others who organized this important event, as well as my fellow school committee candidates sitting up here with me and all of you in the audience choosing to listen to us instead of Elizabeth Warren and company on TV right now. So thank you. I hope you'll vote for me on November 5th for the following reasons. I am transparent about school committee issues and decisions, and I work to have important topics discussed publicly at our meetings. I approach conversations and decision-making within the committee with a lens of collaboration, brainstorming, and listening. And at the same time, I do not approve big or important changes without careful planning and budget and equity analyses. I'm committed to an outstanding education for all students. And I'm also committed to policies that do not tolerate bullying and that ensure equity and equal opportunities for all students of all gender identities, sexual preferences, religions, races, ethnicities, economic backgrounds, and immigration status. I rely on the feedback of community members who share their experiences and offer suggestions about how we can do better. This includes students, teachers, parents, and our Northampton community in general. I will continue to listen and facilitate these essential conversations. Currently, I'm having weekly listening sessions at Forbes and Lilly libraries. The session times are listed on my website, and I invite you to come speak with me at one of them. Additionally, if I am re-elected, I plan to continue these on a monthly basis. The most important job of a school committee member is to work with the superintendent to get policies and budgets, to set policies and budgets that result in the best possible student achievement, which includes both academics and learning to be thoughtful and kind citizens. I'm excited to continue this work and ask for your vote on November 5th.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you all for attending, and thanks to our candidates here tonight.